And the staff to the Wednesday, February fourteenth, um, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Um, I, I know that one of the commissioners will be out tonight. At least one of us have a, a commitment to love and the rest of us will be begging forgiveness from our partners. Um, but before we begin, I, I know that one of the-
Meredith had to work, so.
Oh, sorry.
She's serving beer.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, but I know that we need to, one of the commissioners would like to join us online, so we need to have a motion in a second and a vote to have Commissioner Freitas join us online.
I will move to allow Commissioner Freitas to join via Zoom.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
A motion in a second, I'll put that to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 As so moved, passed. Welcome, Commissioner Freitas.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
You bet. Um, all right, so in tonight's agenda, I'm not going to read the land acknowledgement tonight. I invite everyone to read it on the agenda. We often speak it and sometimes we don't. Uh, let's move right to item A, roll call tonight.
Come on, I don't need to turn that off. Good evening, everyone. Um, Commissioner Lazar?
Uh, here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Freitas?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Absent.
And Commissioner Benson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to ask Commissioner Kraft to lead us in the salute to the flag, if you don't mind?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unencouraged, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move right to item C, the approval of the minutes of January tenth. Um, I, I would like to hear a, a motion in a second to approve those minutes.
Uh, I'll move that we approve the minutes as provided.
I'll second that.
So we have a, any, any, um, discussion on those minutes? Any revisions or comments on it? Do I take this to the general public too? Any comments on the minutes? Okay, all right. Um, all right, seeing no additional comments, um, let's vote to approve the minutes of January tenth. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? None. Okay, that passes. Okay, we've got, uh, this is an opportunity, uh, oral communications. Uh, it provides the commissioners and the public with the opportunity to address the commission on any topic not on tonight's agenda. So if you've come with something else that you'd like us to hear about, or you'd like to share with the community, um, please, uh, we'll have people in the, in the chamber first step forward to the microphone. Um, you have, you'll have three minutes to speak to us on any item not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to do that? Let me open it up to online. I don't see any hands up yet. Anyone like to speak to, to the commission on any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, let's move it to the commissioners. Any commissioners like to speak on anything? Okay, so we're moving right into public hearings continued, and there's no items on that, so we're, we have a number of new items tonight. Um, so, um, will, will there be a staff report on the first item?
Senior Planner Castellano will be presenting on the first item. Let me just bring up yours. There we go.
This is the Terzbeck Surplus Property and Right-of-Way Vacation, et cetera. Okay.
Okay. Ooh, it's kinda hot. Good evening, Commissioners. The project before you for your consideration is the Terzbeck Surplus Property and Right-of-Way Vacation and Local Coastal Program Amendment at two thousand Broadway and nine three six West Hawthorne Street.
Go ahead, go again.
Here's a bird's eye view of the project site in the context of the city limits outlined in yellow. It's located in the western portion of the city and along the central portion of Broadway. Zooming in, you can see the project site is located at the northwest corner of Broadway and West Hawthorne Street. Del Norte Street is one street north and provides access to Humboldt Bay and the waterfront trail to the west. Directly to the north of the site is a motel and mini storage facility, and directly west are undeveloped industrial zoned parcels with mapped wetland per the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's National Wetland Inventory. To the east across Broadway, Highway one oh one, is a retail cannabis facility and auto repair shop, and to the south across West Hawthorne Street is a hotel under construction and a bowling alley. The Humboldt Waste Management Authority's Waste Transfer Station is located southwest of the site across, uh, West Hawthorne Street. So here's a portion of the Assessor Parcel Map showing all of the APNs involved in the project site. Here is the city-owned parcel, and here is the applicant-owned parcel, and together these are called the notch. And here are the other two parcels implicated by the project, two thousand Broadway and nine three six West Hawthorne Street, also owned by the applicant. Uh, here's a zoomed-in area of the project site outlined in red, where you can see two thousand Broadway is the eastern portion of the property and includes the notch outlined in yellow, and nine three six West Hawthorne Street is the western portion of the property. Here's a two, October seven, two thousand seventeen Google Street View image showing the north, looking northwest from the corner of Broadway and West Hawthorne Street, and this is very similar to what it looks like today. And then here is an April two thousand nineteen Google Street View image, uh, looking west, or north, I'm sorry, it's on the south side of Hawthorne Street, looking from the recology offices behind me looking toward the west side of the West Hawthorne Street parcel. And this is basically what it looks like as well, except there's, um, several shipping containers being stored there. So I broke up the project into two components for analysis in the staff report, and the first component is the proposed surplus property and summary vacation actions associated with two thousand Broadway. The applicant is requesting that the City of Eureka surplus and convey the city-owned portion of the notch to the adjoining property owner of two thousand Broadway, which is the applicant, and vacate the alley easement over the entire notch. The notch was created in the distant past for a twenty-foot wide by a hundred and thirty-foot long public alley which was never developed. Future development and use of the notch will be combined with the surrounding larger two thousand Broadway parcel. Surplus property requirements are found in California Government Code six five four oh two and City Policy two point zero one, as well as California Government Code for, Section four, five four two two zero, which is the Surplus Land Act. Uh, the California Government Code Section six five four oh two and City Policy both require the disposition of surplus property be, to be found in conformity with the general plan, and the City Policy requires a report on whether the surplus property is needed for present or future city or public use, and whether the shape and size of the surplus property is suitable for conforming development, and if it's not, the property can be recommended for disposal to the adjoining property owner. Uh, street vacation requirements are found in Streets and Highways Code, Section eighty three hundred, which gives jurisdictions and authority to terminate a public right to use a street, and a street is defined as a road, alley, street, trail, or other public right-of-way or easement. The state code section and city policy describe the process for street vacations, and like the general plan conformity finding for the surplus property disposition, the California Government Code six five four oh two also applies here. So the proposed street vacation needs to be found in conformity with the general plan. Both the Streets and Highways Code and the City Policy outline the process for a general versus a summary vacation. A summary vacation is a shortened and more simple process than a general vacation because the adoption and posting of a resolution of intent, which would declare the city council's intention to order the vacation, is not required. The proposed alley easement vacation qualifies as a summary vacation because the alley easement has not been used and has been impassable for over five years, and no public money has been spent to maintain it. Here is a April two thousand nineteen Google Street View looking west from Broadway at the notch within two thousand Broadway. The city's six hundred square foot portion of the notch is towards the interior of the lot. The current conditions look very similar to this image. So the second project component is the proposed LCP Amendment action on nine, nine three six West Hawthorne Street. The entire property outlined in red has split industrial and commercial land use and zoning designations, which limits the property owner's ability to redevelop the two parcels together. Therefore, the applicant proposes a local coastal program amendment, the LCP Amendment, to change the land use and zoning designations from G I M G, that's general industrial, shown in gray, to G S C C S, that's general service commercial and service commercial, in dark red, in order to be consistent with two thousand Broadway. There is no specific project identified at this time, but the current intent is to redevelop the entire three point one acre, acre property with new retail and service commercial uses that may complement the new hotel being built across the street, help further revitalize Broadway aesthetically, and provide more visitor-serving establishments versus industrial warehouses at this location. The service commercial zoning district allows for a variety of retail stores, offices, service and amusement establishments, wholesale businesses and residences, while the industrial zoning district allows big box retail, office, general, and heavy manufacturing, warehousing, garbage dumps, junkyards, wrecking yards, and no residences. It's important to note that permitted uses in the ML, that's the light industrial zoning district, and this is the general industrial zoning district, um, are allowed in the service commercial zoning district with a conditional use permit. Also, uh, the service commercial and the general industrial zoning districts have similar development standards, whereas each zoning district has a maximum floor area ratio of one point two, uh, while the max height for the service commercial zoning district is fifty-five feet, but the industrial zoning district is thirty-five feet. So to approve the LCP Amendment to change the land use and zoning designations, the land use plan map, or LUP map, or as we like to call the coastal general plan land use map, must be amended, and the proposed land use map change must be found to conform with the Chapter Three policies of the Coastal Act. And then the implementation plan map, i.e. the IP map, also the coastal zoning code map, must be amended, and the, to change the zoning designation, and that change must be consistent with and adequate to carry out the certified policies of the city's LUP, that's the coastal general plan, um, consistent with and adequate to carry out the eleven objectives of the coastal zoning code, and four additional requirements when changing to a commercial district, which is described in your staff report. So what does this all do? The proposed surplus property and right-of-way vacation will resolve longstanding property title issues on two thousand Broadway and provide the owner's certainty that they can redevelop and/or sell the parcel. And as previously mentioned, the LCP Amendment will allow the entire property to be redeveloped together with new commercial uses. Um, nine three six West Hawthorne Street is not within the city's categorical exclusion area, uh, which could exempt, um, future projects from coastal development requirements, so it's not in that area. So any future development encompassing this property, this, the nine three six West Hawthorne would require a coastal development permit. And then the entire property is a water, it's on the Waterboard GeoTracker site, therefore it can't qualify for any categorical exemptions from CEQA, um, which will give the city the ability to address project-specific impacts that could not be addressed in the proposed initial study mitigated negative declaration for this project, because there is no specific project at this time. So here we are at the Planning Commission, where you will consider the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration and recommend action to the city council. I do want to point out that we did not receive any comments on the environmental document during the thirty-day review, and I apologize, I did not include a statement about that in the staff report, and I will make sure to include that in the council staff reports moving forward. Uh, then, let's see, next, the project will proceed to the city council, who could adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration, and declare the property surplus, and vacate the alley easement over the notch, as well as hold a public hearing on the LCP Amendment and introduce an ordinance. Then there will be a second city council meeting to approve the LCP Amendment and adopt the ordinance and direct staff, excuse me, to, uh, forward the LCP Amendment application to the Coastal Commission for certification. Uh, the small city-owned parcel for surplus property does have to follow the Surplus Land Act, so after council meeting one, if they do declare it surplus property, then staff will send a notice out to resource agencies for a required sixty-day, um, noticing period. If no one responds, then the city can transfer the prop, can transfer the property to the applicant, the adjoining property owner. If someone does respond, then we'll, um, do, proceed with negotiations and then return back to council. Now, we haven't come across that yet, so that'll be interesting if that happens. Uh, lastly, well, if it gets approved, the LCP Amendment, we would submit it to the California Coastal Commission, and they have ninety days to go to hearing to certify the amendment, or they can request a one-year extension for good cause. So therefore, for the reasons presented in the staff report, and in the presentation, and the environmental document, staff recommends the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, consider the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration, adopt a resolution recommending the city council declare a twenty-foot by thirty-foot, that's six hundred square foot parcel known as APN zero zero three dash one eight two dash zero one three surplus property, and summarily, summarily vacate an approximately twenty-foot by a hundred and thirty-foot long right-of-way easement over the notch, APN zero zero three dash one eight two dash zero one three and dash zero one four, and adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the local coastal program amendment to change the land use and zoning designations for property located at nine three six West Hawthorne Street, APN zero zero three, one eight two, zero one zero, from general industrial to service commercial. I have a motion, but we can stop screen sharing for discussion and the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner, for that. Good, uh, presentation, answered a lot of questions, um, good visuals, as, as always, um, puts it in perspective. Um, I'd like to turn, turn over, to turn to the commission for questions for Senior Planner Castellano before we open it up to the public.
Uh, Senior Planner Castellano, you, um, mentioned something about longstanding property title issues, and is that because of the nature of the city-owned property within the parcel, or is there something else?
Correct. When, um, I believe several years ago, um, the property owner discovered that in the title search, that what he thought was all of his property was not, and that there was described in the title report, this six hundred square foot property owned by the city, as well as this, um, easement from Broadway. So, he wasn't, he had someone that was interested in buying, and it fell through because, you know, if, you wouldn't be able to construct, build on that portion.
And, you know, it, there's, is there any evidence to suggest that there's ever been an, an improvement of this right-of-way?
Not, I checked with engineering, and no. I know Caltrans, when they were doing their sidewalk improvements, there was already driveway there, so they improved the driveway, but it's, I, yeah, I talked to Public Works, they have not expended any money, they didn't know of any money being spent on it. Also, you look at Google Street View, it's been roped off, and vehicles have been blocking it since two thousand seven. Um-
I'm looking at a photo from nineteen ninety, and it looks like it's not occupied, but it certainly has been. This is in my neighborhood, I've seen it for years now.
Yeah, actually, let me clarify too, there was a historic resource report that was done, so it's my understanding that that alley was created in the twenties or thirties for a bunch of buildings that were on the property that were then removed, demolished by the fifties. So it was used-
Right.
-in the past, but-
Okay, um, and then, I, I see there's a soil and groundwater management plan that's attached to the MND, but, um, is, is the, is the, is this an open site currently on-
It's been closed, but, yeah, but there is still some residual contamination, thus why it there, soil and groundwater management plan.
And, and I think in your presentation, you mentioned that the change to the commercial use for the, um, the industrial zone and plan portions would eliminate certain heavier industrial uses, and then conditionally allow some of the other uses. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, um, thanks.
Commissioner Freitas or Kraft, do you have any questions for Senior Planner Castellano?
I do have one question, it's a curiosity question, and no wrong answer here, but in a case like this, is there any compensation to the city when they cede that land over?
It's my, I mean, it's a six hundred square foot parcel. Um, it's my understanding that there was discussions before my time that because of the potential to redevelop the site, to bring the city more taxes, and really overall help revitalize the city, that there would be no fee to transfer that title.
I, I like that answer, and it's kinda like where worth a group of staff and commissioners are sitting is the size of what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that you can do with the parcel by itself, really.
All right. Uh, very good staff report, thank you.
Apparently, it, it takes a lot of process and steps that you've described to give something away to somebody. All right.
And I, I do not have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Freitas. Um, so I guess my question is, there, since there are so many steps that you outlined, are we able to bundle this into one single motion, or do you need us to make several motions for the different components of this?
I prepared one motion for you, it's fairly long, but, yeah, that's why I did, the recommendation is two for the two separate, but the motion is one, that was the shortest I could get it. But I do have a motion prepared where you just read one sentence.
Thank you.
Really, really long sentence.
We won't invite any English professors here to look at, run on sentences. Okay, let's turn it over to the public to, to make comments on this at this point. Let's start with, uh, folks who are in chambers. Anyone like to comment on this project, the Terzbeck Surplus Property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, project? Anyone online like to comment on this?
I got them hands.
Okay, um, all right, let's bring it back to the commissioners. Um, this seems very consistent with the general plan, and, um, you know, this is government assisting, um, and updating, and, um, you know, getting out of the way as much as possible to, to let these landowners do what, what they will on this site. Um, I, I'm in, I, it's easy to support this.
Yeah, I can pull it up.
I'd be happy to make a motion. Uh, I move that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council declare a twenty-by-thirty-foot, uh, parcel, six hundred square feet, known as APN zero zero three dash one eight two dash zero one three surplus property, and summarily vacate a right-of-way easement over APNs zero zero three, one eight two, zero one three, and zero one four, and adopt another resolution recommending the city council approve a local coastal program amendment to change the land use and zoning designations for the property located at nine thirty-six West Hawthorne Street, parcel number zero zero three, one eight two, zero one zero, from general industrial to service commercial.
Um, I'll second that motion. Okay, um, yeah, good, good motion. It's got the surplus, the vac, the vacation, the amendment to the LCP, the changing of the zoning. I think you got it all. Good job. Okay, um, let's put it to a vote. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? None. Uh, motion carries. Okay, we will move to item F two, the Humboldt Q O Z Fund, Starbucks and Habit Burger Drive-Thru Restaurant.
This is Senior Planner Savage. Did you pull Lisa's up?
No, because it wasn't in there, but it should be in there.
Oh. Okay. This one? Okay, now I gotta find Zoom. Where are you, Zoom?
Hide, hide.
Share. Share, slideshow. Beginning, and then, let me do this right. Hi, video panel. Oh, okay, it's good, good to go. Ah! Good evening, Commissioners. The project before you for consideration are modifications to the design review for Starbucks and Habit Burger. The project is located on two parcels between Fourth and Fifth Street. Zooming in closer, you can see the property is located between Fourth, Fifth, and T Streets. Before we go, um, launch into the presentation, I would like to clarify that, um, design review is made up of two components, which is site plan review and architectural review. And so, um, initially, part of the project was done for site plan review for both, but architectural review was only done for Starbucks. So I just wanted to clarify that before we go any further. Design review for the two drive-thru restaurants was originally approved on May ninth, twenty twenty-two by the Planning Commission, along with a conditional use and coastal development permits. At the time, Starbucks had been identified as the tenant for the proposed nineteen oh six Fourth Street restaurant, but no tenant had been identified for the nineteen seventeen Fifth Street space. Architectural review, site plan review, and assigned permit for the Starbucks drive-thru were approved, but only site plan review was approved for the nineteen seventeen Fifth Street because the proposed design of the building facades and signage was unknown at the time. The applicant has now identified Habit Burger as the tenant for the drive-thru restaurant at nineteen seventeen Fifth Street, and is therefore requesting design review modification to approve the Habit Burger building design. The Habit Burger development includes a two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine square foot restaurant with sidewalks, parking, landscaping, and a single drive-thru, single lane drive-thru. In addition to the newly proposed Habit Burger building design, changes are proposed to the originally approved site layout, which includes reconfiguring both parcel lots to include dedicated parking for Starbucks on the Habit Burger parcel, reversing the layout of Habit, reversing the layout of Habit Burger and the drive-thru entrance from the west side or T Street to the east side of the parcel, moving the shared trash enclosure slightly to the east to be out of Starbucks parking area, adding a designated ADA path of travel between the two restaurant buildings and the trash enclosure, and closing the exit onto Fifth Street. There are no landscaping requirements for parking facilities in the CS Zone District, however, an extensive landscaping plan is proposed. The approved landscaping plan for the Starbucks parcel is not changing. The landscaped area on the Habit Burger parcel will be approximately three thousand three hundred and seventy square feet, and will include accent trees, shrubs of various heights, grasses, ground cover, and vines. Site irrigation will be supplied by a smart controller and will comply with the state's requirements for water efficiency and landscaping. To approve the changes to site plan, the site plan review must preserve the natural beauty of the city's site, prevent the indiscriminate clearing of property and destruction of trees and shrubs, prevent excessive grading of hillsides and creation of drainage hazards, ensure that structures are properly related to their sites and to surrounding sites and structures, and to traffic circulation in the vicinity, ensure that parking areas, walkways, and landscaping are arranged to accomplish the objectives of the zoning code. As previously, as previously discussed, the Planning Commission is only considering architectural review for Habit Burger. Although the CS Zone District has no minimum front, side, or rear yard setback requirements, the design provides ample space between the restaurant and the property lines. There is no maximum, there is a maximum height of fifty-five feet, and the proposed building height is twenty-four feet. The maximum floor area, area ratio, or FAR, is a hundred and twenty percent, and the proposed FAR for the site is seventeen point eight percent. Regarding parking, thirteen off-street parking spaces are required for Habit Burger, and sixteen are provided. The purpose of architectural review is to prevent the erection of structures that would be inharmonious with their surround- inharmonious with their surroundings or would have an adverse effect on the value of property or improvements in the vicinity. The planning commission's review includes exterior design, materials, textures and colors, but does not include elements of the design that do not affect exterior appearance. Portions of all four facades, facades are covered in a Cafe Mocha old brick product, which is made up of thin pieces of kiln fired clay brick mounted onto web sheeting. The rest of the exterior is a stucco or cement plaster texture in fine sand finish in the color chalky. On the west elevation, there is a V groove folded aluminum wall painted in maize yellow. All awnings and the drive through canopy are also painted in the yellow maze. Here's the east elevation. The trim and downspouts and window frames are painted in jet black. Here are the north and south facing elevations and from this view, you can see that the yellow wall is actually angled. Moving on to signs. A pole sign on the Habit Burger parcel and a monument sign on the Starbucks parcel were included in the original design review approval. Each sign proposes to advertise both Starbucks and Habit Burger, and this would not be allowed under current sign regulations effective September twenty twenty two. However, because the signs were approved prior to September twenty 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 two, both signs are authorized under the previous sign regulations and therefore the newly proposed changes to these approved but not yet constructed signs to incorporate Habit Burger advertising must be included in the design review modification. Once installed, these signs will be considered legally nonconforming with the current sign regulations and the future proposed modifications will only be allowed in conformance with the nonconformity regulations of the coastal zoning code. The Habit Burger parcel includes an existing pole sign along Fifth Street, previously used for Sizzler advertising that will be repurposed and remain in its current location. The pole sign will display both Habit Burger and Starbucks signs. The proposed Starbucks sign is a double sided internally lit sign and each side is fifty three point three three square feet or a hundred and seven, a hundred and six point six seven square feet for both sides. And the Habit Burger sign is also a double sided internally illuminated pole sign with each side being forty two point six seven square feet for a total of eighty five point three four square feet for the Habit Burger sign. The total signage for the pole sign is a hundred and ninety two square feet, which is well below the seven hundred and twenty square foot maximum for the site. The monument sign will be located on the Starbucks parcel along Fourth Street. The proposed monument sign is a double sided internally lit sign and each side is eighty four square feet or a hundred and eighty, a hundred and sixty eight square feet for both sides. Under the old code, both sides of the monument sign count towards the total sign area and the sign is well under the seven hundred and square foot maximum. The recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution conditionally approving the design review modification for nineteen oh six Fourth Street and nineteen seventeen Fifth Street. We'll stop screen sharing and we'll be available to answer questions. I also believe the applicant is online.
Thank you for the very good presentation, Senior Planner Savage. I'll turn it over to the commission for any initial questions.
So I wanted to make sure, are we, we're only considering the building appearance, not the actual overall design of the site? Because it appears the site plan for the southern portion of the property where the Habit Burger is, is changed quite a bit.
Yes, you're fir- first of all, you are looking at the site plan because it has changed. As I, we could flip back to the side if you'd like to see.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure because I wasn't, I thought I misunderstood when you were.
Site, site plan was originally approved when we came here initially. However, they flipped some of the, they flipped the location of the Habit Burger from how it was proposed, you know.
Oh yeah, I got it. I just, I just want to make sure that was within our purview. And so as I understand it, yeah, they did flip the location. Also, the, they're no longer using Fifth Street as a point of ingress or egress, right? And, and T Street's only used for ingress, not egress, right?
T Street is ingress and egress. That's the only ingress and egress. Well, along, you can also use the alley from U.
Yeah, it looked like U was available as well.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, those are the main things I noted and I, and I think the fact that it's not on, not coming off of Fifth, on, on or off of, on Fifth Street is a good improvement.
Caltrans was pleased with that.
Yeah, I had concerns about that the first time. Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions. It, is signage included in the exterior design that we are reviewing tonight?
Signage is included in the design.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. I thought it was. That seems to be the main issue here is two businesses can be on one sign if both parcels are owned by the same owner. I think that's what I picked up from reading your report. And are we asking for a variance to that?
No, under the old code, which these signs are under the old code, you can have offsite advertising on a sign. So they both are offsite advertising for the other one.
To each other. Got it. Okay, so there's no variance required with that. Okay. Will the existing structures be demolished or, or adapted?
I believe they're demolishing them as we speak.
Okay. Is it required that all the colors are named after foods like maize yellow and, and Mocha? Or can we say jet black and chalk?
I can't answer that.
It's not, it's not a serious question. Sorry. I have a strange sense of humor. Those are all my questions. Thank you. Commissioner Freitas, do you have any questions?
Uh, nope, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, let's open it up to the general public. We'll start with the folks who've come to chambers tonight. Would anyone like to comment on this proposal, this project? Okay, seeing no one in the house, how about online? Go ahead and hit the hand up sign if you'd like to speak on this. Okay. Um, can you bring up the motion, please?
I'm happy to make this motion. I move the planning commission adopt a resolution conditionally approving the design review modification for nineteen oh six Fourth Street and nineteen seventeen Fifth Street.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst commissioners? Commissioner Freitas, anything?
Nope.
Okay, let's move it right to a vote moving along tonight. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And congratulations to the petitioners or the applicants. Okay, let's move on to item F three, the A C G C mixed use development. Will we be hearing a staff report on that as well tonight?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to give this one.
Okay.
And I just wanted to point out, we did get some comments on this one that have been emailed to the planning commissioners today.
Oh, before we get started, I just want to say, I did have one ex parte communication. I saw Mr. Maxon and I asked him about his prior ambitions for the site. He was the previous owner before the applicant and that was the extent of our conversation.
Okay. So this is the A C G C mixed use development project. Um, it is located on the northern part of town, north of Third Street. Between, at the corner of Third and G. It's, nearby uses are across, across G, there's a vacant ground floor corner space. Next door in the Joseph Russ Building, there's a real estate office and a radio station on the first floor. And then in the, oops, Carson Block Building, there's a printing press and art gallery. Across the street, there's public parking. Um, there's also public parking to the southeast, which is the site of the future center. Where there's the transit center. So eighteen thousand, approximately eighteen thousand square foot, four story mixed use building is being proposed on a vacant lot with thirteen residential apartments above two ground floor commercial retail spaces that could potentially be combined into one space. And the zoning, it's in the coastal zone, which is Third Street and, and it's in the waterfront commercial zoning district. The permits required, the, it requires a conditional use permit, which is before you today for the residential units above the ground floor. And the applicant is requesting permission to use the first floor as an office, although they do not have a tenant identified yet. Anything that needs a conditional use permit, under our code, it triggers the need for a coastal development permit and a variance is also requested from the maximum floor area ratio for the district, which is two point five. They're proposing a floor area ratio of four for an eighteen thousand square foot building on a forty five hundred square foot lot. Other approvals that were needed that they've already received. The site was previously occupied by the Russ Market Building. Um, it was listed on the local register of historic places in two thousand and six, right before that, that building was unfortunately destroyed by fire. And it, it, even though the land is vacant, it remained on the register. So it needed a historic preservation review. It also requires design review. And when the historic preservation, when historic preservation review is required by the Historic Preservation Commission, they also act on the design review at the same time. So they did that on December sixth, twenty twenty three, and they approved both. And I believe we included their resolution as an attachment to your staff report. So as described in the staff report, staff believes the findings can be made to approve the project. So our recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution, finding the project is exempt from CEQA and approving with conditions. We have a suggested motion when you're ready.
Thank you very much, Director Kenyon, for that presentation. Let's move it again to the, to the commission for initial questions.
I have one. My understanding is that the floor area ratio is historically consistent and also where we plan to be going in the future. Is that correct or am I off base there?
Yeah, that's correct. The, in our twenty forty general plan, it's a floor area ratio of five maximum in the Old Town.
That was all I had.
My question is, is there going to be a sign or a plaque about the Russ Market somewhere on the building? Was that requested by the historic preservation? There be any nod or acknowledgement of the former use of that site?
That wasn't, that hadn't been brought up.
Okay. Commissioner Freitas, any questions? Or Commissioner Lozare?
I, I just have a, I guess, quick request. If maybe Kristen, in your own, your own words, would you be able to kind of summarize how you analyze that this project is consistent with current general plan policy in terms of the direction we want to move for development throughout the city?
Yeah, um, our twenty forty general plan talks about how it wants to be different than the past three general plans that were kind of based on the suburban sprawl model of development that unfortunately our coastal zoning code still reflects, uh, which, you know, even though it's only a two point five FAR here, it's a hundred foot tall maximum building height. So we, we plan, you know, the, the old code, it's, it's wanting these giant parking lots with the building not taking up much of the space and that's not consistent with our historic development patterns. So the twenty forty general plan is trying to push us back to what we were developing like in the eighteen eighties through the nineteen forties, uh, where, you know, um, we have greater densities and intensities development and we have buildings fronting the street, creating that nice framing of our streets and making it more pedestrian friendly. And the twenty forty general plan calls for it to be the most dense and intense in the central business district in this Old Town, downtown area and, and radiate, radiate out from there. Is that what you were asking for?
Yeah, no, that's really helpful, just having kind of guidance on, you know, what we're intending to do. And the picture of the Russ Market was, was helpful too. It's nice to kind of see, I mean, I've seen it before, but helpful to remember that it's the same kind of development that it had on the site before the fire. So I think that's helpful.
Commissioner Lozare, any questions? Or comments?
I guess I, my question about the variance findings, um, the, the argument, I think, in the staff report and what I'm catching is that this would be consistent with the general plan, but for the fact that the general plan doesn't really cover the coastal zone at this juncture. So we're kind of forecasting where we would be headed with the next iteration of our landies planning for that.
For the variance findings, we, we did tie it to the current LCP. Because it also calls for, let me see, calls for the maintenance of the basic scale and character of buildings and patterns of building sites in the core area. So it doesn't just look forward to the, the future zoning. We, we did make findings related to the current LCP in the variance section.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to find them real quick and I was struggling a little bit, but I think I can kind of see the general gist of it for right now. So that's fine. If we get into it more. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, I also want to just say that we, we did receive written comments from Solomon Iverta, Frederick Siegfried and Colin Fisk in a timely enough fashion to, to review them. Mr. Iverta asked that, that his be read aloud. I just want to say we typically don't read those written comments. If you want to be sure that your voice is heard, come on down and you have your three minutes at the mic or come, come in online, but they, rest assured that they were read. Let's turn this over to the public now to comment on this application.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, my name's Raylena Crickson. I'm the Real Estate Development Director and community liaison for A C G C. Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the commercial tenant usage for, and the approved conditional uses. Currently, we're in discussion with several businesses that have expressed interest in the ground floor tenant space, but, uh, and we do appreciate the conditional use granted for the offices on the ground floor. Um, in the conversations we've had with possible tenants, the current economic uncertainty has made it difficult for people to sign on to a built to suit lease, building out the space as well as signing on for our minimum lease terms. However, there are, you know, other businesses that represent services that aren't particularly business serving in the way that the commercial waterfront district asks for. Uh, so we appreciate that variance, but I just wanted to give a little bit of context in that we will prioritize businesses that do, you know, serve that, that vate use in the, in the land use code. But it is, it is a little tough. So I just wanted to make that known that, you know, Um, so I just wanted to make that known, that, you know, we're not outright seeking to make them offices. Um, just hoping to open it up for any, you know, reasonable commercial tenants in the future.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Juanita Catching. I'm not representing anybody but me. Uh, I just wanted to add something to what she just said. I think it's time for city officials to be a little bit flexible on the, uh, ground-floor uses. We don't have a lot of people living in the city in the downtown area as it is. And there are probably not enough there currently to really support the businesses that are already there. Offices can really kind of get us over the hump of this transition period. And they needn't be just viewed as neutral spaces. I don't see them that way. Offices employ people who shop downtown, eat downtown. They can use their windows in order to explain who they are with big photographs, hopefully big, things that are indicative of the business that is, uh, inside. A good example of that would be, uh, the radio station in Robert Maxon's building, which is next door to that, uh, where the people have a whole lot of old and very interesting radios in, in their lobby. It's interesting to walk by the place. I just would like to urge city officials to be flexible, especially right now, about requiring retail or restaurants or galleries to be put in where we probably don't have the residential's, um, capability of supporting those well. And it seems to me we're not supporting all the businesses that we have already down there all that well. Businesses are better supported when there are people living in the area. And I think the two Eureka Farmers Markets illustrate this perfectly. The one in Henderson Center is in the middle of the neighborhood, and people walk to the market. And that market is and always has been very successful. It thrives. The downtown market struggles, and we have very few residences down there, residents down there right now to support it. And I know people always bring up tourists, but tourists are not a good supporter of farmers markets. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Juanita.
Hello, commission members. My name's James Adam Taylor. Um, I just wanted to say that I've been fortunate enough to, um, see some of the other buildings that ACGC has constructed in Eureka and through some of the other, um, commission meetings in Arcata. And I have to say I'm thoroughly impressed by the attention to detail that they put into making spaces that are for members of our community. We so desperately need more, particularly missing middle housing and housing that really makes Old Town a place that people want to live. And having more people in Old Town is going to make it like a thriving neighborhood again. And I personally am one of the people that is within a block of this site almost all the time. My work, my life, everything's basically there. I'm one of the few people that's going to hear construction sounds, and I'm overwhelmingly in favor of this. I know there have probably been comments about parking. And we're going to be okay, even if there's a handful less spaces and there's more activity because people are coming down here for meetings at offices, shopping, restaurants, whatever. We're going to get through it. We're all going to be better. I, let's, let's do it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Hi, uh, my name is Scott Pesch, and I'm a local commercial real estate broker. And I actually came here tonight to listen to a different project than this one, but I was surprised to hear about the ground-floor office CUP. And I, just from a commercial real estate perspective, what I'm seeing these days is there's a lack of office space available today that have, um, these newer upgrades. Just mainly, my concerns when I'm broken or transaction is the requirements for some of these tenants that need ADA accessibility. Uh, we have a lot of old buildings in the county, as well as obviously in the city of Eureka. But it's just nice to see some new improvements that might help our offices, our office supply. Because we do, despite seeing some vacancies out there, um, a lot of those are retail. We do have at this moment a lack of office space that's needed. So, um, I just was surprised to see that, which I think is a great use of that space. It's right in the middle of the city center, and I think it'd be good reciprocation between, between the office users and the people that are living there as well as the retailers. So those are my comments. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Robert Maxon. I'm here tonight representing Globe Imports and Globe Properties. We are, uh, owners of the adjacent parcel of this project, and that includes the historic Joseph Russ Building dating back to nineteen hundred. So when I see a project like this, I naturally, my first concerns run to, how will that building be affected? What is the context here? How is this all going to work? It's a lot of work to put a project like this together. It's very complex. And I know, um, a bit from my own experience at this very same corner. And what I see here, um, I really applaud, and, uh, I think it's a fine project. It addresses all the, the hard components that, that come into this, this emerging vicinity. The project is bringing a new height to this corner. It's going to be really prominent, you know, what this corner really deserves. And I just, uh, I can't say enough about it. And I, I'm, I feel fortunate to have watched from my office, um, the developer's project there at Second and East Streets from when they first broke ground and to the near completion now. And, um, I'm really impressed by this whole thing, and, uh, I look forward to it and working with them in the future, and, uh, therefore I ask for your approvals here. And, uh, and I want to thank staff as well for, uh, a fine report and presentation in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maxon.
Good evening. My name's Julian Berg, the architect on the project, and, um, yeah, I want to start off by saying I'm really excited to be working on this project. It's something I really believe in, doing mixed-use projects in our downtown urban core. And, um, I've done a few projects now with Will and his team, and it's really great that they want to do high-quality, good projects for our area. So it's really a perfect match. Um, I want to add to what Raylena said about the flexibility. We do have a chase going up from the first floor all the way to the roof, so, um, you could redo the space into a restaurant or some other, you know, type of use in the future. So we're building in that flexibility. There's higher ceilings, so you could do, you know, additional duct work or electrical if you need to. And, um, yeah, I think, I mean, I'm biased being the architect, but I think we've come up with a nice design that, uh, balances modern design with what you see in the, the Old Town area with its detailing, you know, and, and, um, yeah. And furthermore, um, I've done a lot of traveling in Europe and other cities, and they're all doing these kind of mixed-use projects right downtown, and it just adds such a vibrancy to the urban core. So having residences there is really a great thing. My parents actually have a mixed-use building a few blocks down the street on Second Street. And we've got great tenants upstairs. Some of them have lived there eight, nine, ten years, you know, and they just love it. And some don't even have a car. So, um, we're kind of continuing that sort of theme right here. So thank you. And, oh, also, I want to say the staff at the city has just been great to work with. Um, professional, helping us to get through difficult routes you have to navigate when you're trying to get a project like this approved. So thank you.
Julian, can you hold for a minute?
Sure.
Um, Director Kenyon, is this an appropriate time to ask questions of owner's representative? Okay. I just, um, yeah, I'd like to hear maybe a little bit more about, is this a LEED-certified building?
No, it's not LEED, but the building-
Are there some energy efficiency elements that you could tell us just a little bit about?
Sure, yeah. Uh, the building isn't LEED-certified, but it's with the Modern Building Code, twenty-twenty-two CBC, it's pretty stringent. We have to meet, you know, all the new energy codes, which are getting close to net zero. Um, there's going to be solar on the roof, and we're doing heat pump, um, heating units for all the residential um, units, and they're efficient, you know, they're all electric. And then there's higher insulation throughout the building, and of course, LED lighting, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
A lot of, locally, there are not a lot of LEED projects that are privately developed because it's a pretty costly, uh, procedure to go through, although the university has done quite a few, so.
Architecturally, it has that look.
Yeah.
In looking at the design, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Berg, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to, um, the online, um, participants. Are there any comments on this ACGC mixed-development project? Okay, no hands. Well, let's, let's move it back to the commission then for, for discussion. Actually, if, if I can call up one of the owner's representatives again to, to the mic, that would be great. You heard my, my question about there being a plaque or some kind of-
I did, yeah.
I- interpretive sign or, or something. Um, you know, the, the Russ family is a, is a pioneer family of note in Humboldt County history, and that, that building has, I hate to, you know, I don't want to plan by nostalgia, and I'm certainly not going to propose that we make any conditions of the permit around you doing this, but I'm just curious to hear your, your interest or willingness to maybe develop something like that.
We'd be happy to consider it, yeah.
Okay.
As long as we don't have to go through a signed permit.
Understood. Understood. Any other questions from any other commissioners while we have owner's representative? Okay, thank you for stepping back up, yeah.
Commemorative, remembered plaques are exempt from sign permitting.
Oh, good to know. Commemorative plaques are exempt.
So there.
There's an incentive. There's a carrot for you.
No, I have a plaque-related thing. It's, um, I worked with a gentleman named Bob Libershall, um, on getting a plaque at the corner of Third and G Streets where the City Hall once was located. And in the course of helping him, we pulled together historical images for that area, you know, countless ones, probably hundreds. So I got a pretty good taste of what that development from print looked like. And City Hall was lost after an earthquake in the fifties, um, same with the courthouse, um, which resulted in the building right now. But I think it's worth noting the, the density of development that has occupied that portion of the downtown, including the Wex building that was immediately across the street from where City Hall was located on the, the eastern boundary of G Street. The fact that the, that occupied where the parking lot for the Lost Coast Brewery and the Future Earth Center and things, you know, this isn't an area of the, of the, of the downtown that historically had any parking. It had very little parking. It did have a streetcar system until sixty-seven years ago. But I think, I think when I think about approving new development, that gives me some comfort, given the historic precedent. Um, and it also just happens to dovetail with the direction, that's state law, and, you know, planning, contemporary planning concepts of mixed-use and setting parking maximums, not parking minimums. So, um, those are the things that I'm keeping in mind when we see these types of ambitious projects that will create parking demand and not provide parking. But given that we have proof of concept in history, um, I think that, that isn't something that should be overlooked. And it is relevant to, um, showing that it is possible to, to have projects like this without providing parking. So that, that was something, and that plaque across the street is, was a fun project, and they relayed the cornerstone. Um, it was a great collaboration with the masons and a local contractor, so that was a, that was a fun project to work on.
Thanks for your, yeah, I see this is having an overall really positive impact on, of the vibrancy of, of downtown. That area.
I, I'd just like to say I really appreciate the, uh, public comment here. And I, I went into this uncertain about the office versus a re-travel restaurant kind of uses, and I find the, um, I find the testimony compelling, and I otherwise just love the project, so. Happy to make a motion when it's time.
I have one other thing to mention, um, the, which I just slipped my, my mind, uh, well. Oh, well, I guess, yeah, I guess maybe staff can confirm. Just because we opened the door for offices, and I think we heard from the applicant's representatives that they're, they're going to work with whoever emerges, but that gives them flexibility. It's not a commitment to, they would still be able to utilize the downstairs for, for more preferred, under the code, commercial use types.
Correct. And we have a condition that asks them to please prioritize those over the office.
I did have something else, but I can't remember it, so maybe I'll remember it, but maybe.
Commissioner Freitas, you are out of sight but not out of mind. Is there anything that you would like to add into this conversation?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and maybe this is a good, a good time to do it while, um, Commissioner Lozare is trying to remember his other, his other thought. Um, I guess I would just echo, um, what others are saying. I appreciate the comment. It's heartening to hear so many people coming out to support the direction that this project is going. I think the proximity to the Earth Center, um, will hopefully offset, you know, any kind of parking squeeze. And, and this is the kind of project that we're trying to promote. Um, seems like a pretty similar ask and similar permission that we gave to the applicant's other building a few blocks down the road, which was recently completed, I think, or close to. It looks stunning. I'm really excited um, to see that one go through, so happy to, happy to approve a similar request for this site. And, um, yeah, I'm happy to move forward as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, if I could see the motion?
I did think of it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, DeLa, um, yeah, and I, the only thing I, I wanted to add is that I remember watching the Russ Meat Market burned to the ground that night. I just happen to be in Old Town. I wasn't living in, yeah, in Eureka. And that was a long time ago, and I think it's worth noting how long it takes for a project like this to actually emerge and become, you know, reality. And that, that's never lost on me, but it really, um, hits home, given remembering that trajectory. And speaking with Mr. Maxon about his interest in redeveloping the site and the challenges he faced with the insurance company and not being able to kind of pencil out, you know, his, his, his vision. I, I just think that, yeah, we do need to get out of the way sometimes when it comes to projects that will have a huge impact, positive and, uh, impact on the community. And if the code's not being flexible enough to make them realistic or practical, then it's certainly within our discretion. So I keep that in mind. And, and I'm grateful that we see a project like this emerge and I'm excited by the track record of the applicant. And, uh, it'll be a, a nice addition to our, our downtown.
I'm open to hearing a motion at this point.
I move the planning commission adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the conditional use permit, coastal development permit and variance for the ACGC mixed-use development at the northwest corner of Third and G Streets.
Let me have a second then. All right, um, we've had robust conversation, but if there's any other points, this would be the time to make them. Otherwise, we'll go right to the vote. Okay, it looks like we're going right to the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Abstentions? None. Motion passes. Congratulations, ACGC, um, for, and thank you for doing business in Eureka. Okay, we're moving on to item F4. The Grace Martin Memorial Park and Eureka Waterfront Trail Improvements. Will we be hearing a staff report on that project?
Yes, it was, um, gonna be Assistant Planner Penelope Ponse, but, uh, she got sick at the last minute. So I'm gonna be presenting her PowerPoint for her. It's really nice looking, so I don't want to take credit for it. Uh, all right. Okay, so this is the Grace Martin Memorial Park and Eureka Waterfront Trail Improvements in Halverson Park. Thanks, Derek. Sorry. Here's a bird's eye view of the project location. Um, it is located, like I said, in Halverson Park. Um, there is a staging area across Waterfront Drive in, um, the smaller of the two parking lots at, um, Second and L, um, as well. And it basically spans from L Street to S Street. There's a 255 bridge for context. It's in the coastal zone in the waterfront commercial, um, zoning designation and land use designation. Except for that little, the staging area portion of it is in the office residential district. All right, let me read her notes. All right, uh, in 1982, Robert Halverson donated the land to the city along Humboldt Bay. Today, the park contains the Saco Amphitheater, a portion of the Eureka Waterfront Trail, public docks and a large grass gathering area. The project includes building a new maritime-themed playground and recreational facility called Grace Martin Memorial Park. It's gonna be located north of the amphitheater, east of the Adorni Center parking lot and south of the Bonny Gold desk, guest dock. The playground will have a variety of play features, which will be described later. Uh, the project will retrofit the existing Saco Amphitheater as a primary sitting and watching area for the playground. This project also proposes to rehabilitate approximately 2,500 feet of the Eureka Waterfront Trail, starting from the west side of the Adorni Center parking lot and ending 600 feet east of the Highway 255 Bridge. The portion of the trail to be rehabilitated is torn up by weather and tree roots, which is compromising accessibility and safety for users. Currently, the waterfront trail snakes inland through Saco Amphitheater and, um, people don't like that and walk straight across and there's already a footpath. And so we propose to realign that section of trail, um, in the alignment of where people are walking. And to add an approximately eight-foot wide buffer comprised of rock and native plants, um, between that realigned portion of trail and the new playground. The trail segment between the Adorni Center and playground is approximately 6.5 feet wide and we will be, uh, rehabilitated and widened to 10 feet to become a Class 1 trail. Oops. The trail segment from the playground heading east, oh, I bet this comes up. Yep. Um, will include repaving the existing 10-foot wide trail and adding two-foot wide gravel shoulders, resulting in a 14-foot width, which will be consistent with the newer portion of the trail further east. Um, this segment of the trail will also include four new 20-foot diameter bulb outs, which will have landscaping, more seating and interpretive signage. The sh- there's this sharp curve that exists on, um, the east side of the 255 Bridge, um, north of S Street that will be adjusted to have a more gradual bend. 16 trees along the existing trail may need to be removed to avoid further issues with tree roots ripping up this segment of trail. And the city proposes to replace the trees at a minimum of one-to-one, uh, with Catalina Ironwood or another non-invasive tree species that can withstand the coastal environment. The new trees will be planted far away enough from the paved trail to avoid the tree root issue in the next 20 years. The proposed project spans six city-owned parcels along the city's northern waterfront in the coastal zone and requires a coastal development permit and also site plan and architectural review for the structures, which are play structures mainly. And the city's action on this CDP is appealable to the Coastal Commission because it's between the first public road and the sea and a hundred, less than a hundred feet from Humboldt Bay. So site plan, oh yeah, this is the site plan review findings, uh, that principal, sorry, Senior Planner Lisa Savage went over in her project. And architectural review findings. Again, it includes exterior design materials, textures and colors, but doesn't include elements of the design that do not affect exterior appearance. Moving on. Uh, the Community Services Department created a survey to collect input from the community on the park's design and features and received over 700 responses. With the community's input in mind, the park proposed design will include three play areas. The first one is a Crossing the Bar themed area with a wooden replica of a schooner sailing ship made by local woodworker Aaron Hollenbeck, which will have an ADA accessible route through the middle. A captain's spyglass facing towards Humboldt Bay and an octopus climbing structure of, off the schooner's bow. And there will be a rainbow-colored dolphin rocker with a coil spring. The next of the three areas is the working waterfront area, which will include a stamped concrete dock textured walkway, a timber slide, a log roll balance beam and a log raft decorative, oh, and log raft decorative edging. Uh, lastly, there will be a game area, which will have a chess table with seating and a cornhole colt, court with maritime-themed decor. Other new playground features include ADA accessible pathway and play area marked as the gray dashes on the site plan. Uh, four picnic tables, benches, trash and recycling receptacles. Penelope, if you're listening, you did a great job on this presentation. Drinking fountain, doggy waste station, signage, a park entry greeter. How cute. And landscaping. All areas shown in green on the site plan will be landscaped. Um, so overall, as described in the staff report, the project as conditioned is consistent with the general plan zoning code and local coastal program. And staff recommends the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the proposed playground and trail improvements with conditions. Staff has prepared a suggestion motion, but I will stop screen sharing to allow discussion. Um, and our community services staff is here on Zoom. Um, the, what, if you come up for a public comment and ask, then maybe the, um, commissioners will then ask community services about it.
Okay, um, let's, let's move it to the commission to ask any preliminary questions.
So I was curious, is this firmly within our jurisdiction of the coastal zone, not within any state retained jurisdiction?
Correct. The retained jurisdiction starts at the water.
I have a couple of questions I'm just gonna ask before my baby starts crying, which is gonna happen any second now. I am super excited to see the path being reconfigured, um, by the amphitheater. I was just there the other day and, um, decided to take that little grassy way with the stroller because there were some questionable looking dogs. I was a little unhappy about on the amphitheater. And I was wondering if staff could talk a little more about plans for reconfiguring the amphitheater as a seating area? And if there have been any conversations about just removing it entirely?
Craig, are you, okay, uh, Robin, can you answer that? Oh, we can't hear you.
Welcome, Robin Prasker. Yeah, please answer those questions if you are able to hear us.
You're still
Oh, sorry. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, she, she's struggling to speak. I think she
See your mouth moving, but we don't hear the words.
What about now?
Yes.
We hear you.
Thank you. The Saco Amphitheater, we have done some research and some outreach to the Saco family to discuss what the future of it might be. At this point in time, we're really hoping to incorporate it into the park project. Just because it has all that valuable seating and it is currently underutilized. Um, there is an appetite to remove the top structures from it to open up the view shed more. Um, and that is something that we will be seeking to do at a later time. Um, just, it's unfortunately, our budget doesn't allow to really rip into the structure itself. So that is where we've gotten so far with the Saco's future.
Yeah, let me just comment and say, you know, congratulations on the state parks grant. 620 K was huge. This is a $1.2 million project. It's, it's quite incredible. I love the maritime theme. And I'm assuming that all of this has already been vetted with the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission that it was co-developed with them. So was it, was it sent to us from the open, from OSPRC?
We have presented this project to both OSPR and City Council in the early stages of planning.
Okay, thank you. And was, was, has there been a we ought consultation and input on, on this particular site?
There was some preliminary input at the very beginning that didn't go very far, but as part of our federal funding requirements, there will be additional tribal consultation occurring with Section 106 process.
Thank you, um, Robin Prasker. Um, also, um, can you tell us a little bit more about Grace Martin? Is Grace just simply the largest donor of whom, for, for which we are thankful, or is, is she also a historic figure of some kind in Eureka that I'm not aware of?
Uh, my understanding is that her and her husband Lance approached the city, I think back in about 2016, about bequesting their estate after their death. And the, the project location was very special to them, uh, because they spent a lot of time together eating lunch on the waterfront and just enjoying the area. And they really wanted to see, uh, their funds go to improving that space for all community members in all ages by a park and playground. Um, so that was the initial concept that the city agreed to. And then they also had a very soft spot for locally produced items. So, uh, part of the funding restriction through Humboldt Air Foundation is to source local products. Um, so that is what we'll be following with, uh, those funds. But due to the match grant, um, we do have some flexibility for things that we can't source locally, that we can use the grant funds for out of area. But as you can see in the Blue Ox producing the big boat, uh, we really took that local production to heart and we're gonna continue to do so with, for example, the, um, entry greeters. We're hoping to find a local artist that does concrete work. Um, so we still have some more kind of local outreach to do to infuse some more locally produced elements into the project. But to answer your question going back, I believe she was just a local, um, who, you know, loved parks and gardening and animals, from what I understand.
Thank you, um, Grace and Lance, both. Um, my last question is, you know, being a maritime enthusiast, boat names are very important. I know that this boat is modeled after a schooner. Um, I saw the pictures of schooners. Is there a name for this, for this boat? And, and if not, I'd like to make a recommendation.
Well, the boat is named Grace Martin and it is carved into the boat.
Perfect. Thank you. Those are all my questions for the moment.
So since the boat has, uh, the bar in it, are we gonna horrify kids with the experience of crossing the bar? I know brave men who shudder at that experience. All right, not a serious question. Are any of the trees planned to be removed, either native or otherwise significant?
The staff report analyzed or outlines, outlines the tree species that are being removed. Some of them are native. The really big ones are, um, let me find. I skipped over this in Penelope's staff report. Cypress trees and, uh, Penelope and I found the old trail plans for when it was constructed in the 80s and it was, the landscaping that was, uh, you know, planted at that time. So there, it's unfortunate, uh, they're, you know, mature trees. It would be unfortunate to remove them and we, we will try to avoid having to, but if, they have really torn up the trail there and made it unsafe.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. It's unfortunate, but probably may turn out to be necessary. So I'm, I'm fine with that. All right, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to remind people that Halverson Park was the Dolbeer and Carson Lumber Company. So it's not a, you know, a wild natural place. It's, it's been reclaimed since it's, uh, oops, that's the other one. But yeah. Anyways, yeah, it had a giant lumber mill on it, so it has changed over the years. But, uh, I guess, I guess I, I want to put my two cents in on the Saco Amphitheater. I had not, when, when, uh, when COVID hit, I was the president of the Historical Society and all of a sudden, we were struggling with, how are we gonna have any board meetings? We don't, we can't meet indoors and there's not a lot of good options. And I actually thought about using the Saco Amphitheater because it was a place where you could hear people, there are social distancing possibilities. It was public space, you know? I never thought of it as something that I would ever consider using, but it, it definitely changed. And we may be in a situation again in the near future. So those kinds of spaces may, may be valuable. And, uh, I think it'd be a shame to see it lost. Uh, but it is underutilized. I will admit that much. Um, I'm excited by, for, I'm just echo what some of the other commissioners have said. I think the playground design is a very thoughtful one and I'm very heartened to see that, um, come about and it will definitely provide an asset. I, I do make note of, uh, the comments we received from CRTP about the inadequacies of the, the trail, waterfront trail in this area. And, uh, I don't see it as the burden of this project to resolve those and, but it is worth noting that you hit the parking lot in front of the, um, Adorni Center and you're kind of done. And there's not a great way to negotiate that next stretch. So hopefully we'll see something emerge in the coming years with the Great Robid Trail and, uh, and that's all I can say about that. So, but otherwise I'm, I'm very supportive of this project.
All right, I, I have one more comment, um, on the design and just, you know, being a, a botany nerd, I've, I've got to make this comment. The plant palette is really consistent with coastal prairie and, and appropriate ornamentals, except a few exceptions. The Pacific madrone and the California buckeye are both inland species. They really don't like the coast. They don't like salt spray. They don't like wind. You know, their minimum range is about 10 miles from the coast, all the way to, you know, hundreds of miles. They don't like wind. You know, their minimum range is about ten miles from the coast, all the way to, you know, hundreds of miles inland from the coast. And then even the maple, um, that's, that is proposed, um, will, will do well in protected riparian areas, but not out on that, on that flat, um, open, windswept, uh, plain there. Just those, those three trees will, will not be happy there. Just their salt tolerance is not, is not there and the temperature.
That's good to know. We'll pass that on to, uh, our, the consultant. You still need to take public comment.
I know, I'm, I'm coming to, I know it sounds like we're in conversation about this already. Let's move to public comments. I'm start with folks in the chambers.
I like this project a lot. And as far as your comments on the gazebo, it's an ideal place to keep an eye on your kids when they're playing in the playground. As long as you take out that, uh, sort of a retaining wall thing in front of it. But the question I have is, is a lot of fill gonna be brought in there to raise this area? Not this year, but the year before, I was down there a lot during the king tides. And the water, the bay water was literally sloshing well over all that grass. So without raising that area, the path and a significant part of the playground will be underwater during king tides and, and more so as time goes on. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you for voicing that concern on what you need to catching. Um, typically it's not a Q and A period. It's just a, it's public commentary. But, but we don't have a lot of people here tonight, so I will make an exception and, um, and allow Director Kenyon to answer that question.
Oh, Robin left? Oh, Robin, can you answer?
Because the project is ADA accessible, the playground itself is gonna be raised in elevation, uh, because we are using a ramped walkway to gain elevation up to the slide and the boat. Um, and we're also proposing the rubber surfacing as well, which is not only going to mimic what the ocean would look like, you know, with the boat partially submerged, um, but it is permeable and ADA accessible. Um, so water shouldn't have an issue collecting and draining from that. With the waterfront trail itself, um, I can't quite speak to that. But, um, I, from what I understand, parks and playgrounds and trails aren't considered critical infrastructure. So I don't think there's as large of a concern if it faces some flooding that then, um, recedes. Um, but I'll see if Kristen has anything to add to that.
I don't think we thought, thought through whether this would be an opportunity to raise the trail. But we'll bring that up with Public Works and, um, maybe bring this back.
I can make one comment on this just because I was involved in the Hickshire Trail building. And all of the sediments that we dug out from there went to Halverson Park. And so around two thousand and ten, that entire park was just mounds of soil from restoration and construction projects all over. And so it's already been raised about two to three feet, is my recollection. Almost the entire park, but sea level rise is happening quickly and it may need that kind of effort again. Okay. I think we, do we have a motion? Have we, you're sorry, I haven't. Um, let me, thanks for keeping me on track. I appreciate it, Jessica. Um, do we, are there any other comments from the chambers? Let's move to online. Are there any folks who'd like to comment on the Grace Martin Memorial Park and Eureka Waterfront Trail improvements?
No.
Okay, so public comment is closed officially and we are moving back to the commission. And, um, if we, if the recommended motion could be brought up, that might be helpful at this juncture. Is there any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Any other comment? Okay, we've had a robust conversation. Um, I'm gonna make this suggested motion. I can do that as the chair, can't I?
Correct.
Okay, I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the coastal development permit and design review for the Grace Martin Memorial Park and Eureka Waterfront Trail Improvements Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, let's, um, move right then to, to the vote.
Can I just get a?
You may.
Can we clarify this? I think it's the Grace Wharton Memorial Park. I think it's just misspelled in the slide. I got Wharton, but is it Ordin or Martin?
Martin, M A R T O N.
Then I, I apologize. M A R T O N, all right.
That was a worthwhile comment, because it would have been bad to pass a motion with the wrong name. Okay, so then moving back to the vote, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. Motion passes. Congratulations, um, uh, to Robin and, and Donna Wood for all your efforts on this. And, and thank you again to, um, to our. And thank you to Penelope Pons for providing that presentation and for Director Kenyon for being so quick on your feet to just deliver it. Okay, we are moving to item G, Old Business. And this is item G one, the Vacation Rental Subcommittee Update. And there was also a, a draft memo, uh, for city council. Is there going to be a presentation on this or is this just for discussion?
It's, uh, for discussion and, um, whether the, uh, Planning Commission as a whole is in concurrence with the Subcommittee bringing this to city council. And, um, Michael Kraft, Commissioner Kraft is, I'm gonna speak on it. The, who is the chair of our, of the Subcommittee.
I knew that. I totally knew that. This has been for a while, so Commissioner Lazar, I and, uh, Director Kenyon have done a fair amount of research on vacation rentals, both, uh, statistics from last fall in the city, housing affordability, vacation rental affordability, tied in, uh, some of the staff work that is happening with compliance and, you know, what's permitted and not. And we've drafted this, uh, fairly long, but mostly pictures, mem, draft memo that we propose to send to the City Council. I, I think when it comes to the engagement in the room, in my two years on the Planning Commission, vacation rentals have been the single most contentious thing that comes before us. You know, on, if you read loco comments, it's fast food and that kinda thing. But when it actually comes to neighbors saying, this really upsets me, or, you know, I really wanna do this, uh, it's, it's very much an emotional issue. And we do think that there is, uh, work to be done. We would like to see the city council direct staff to, uh, make this a priority for the next eighteen months or so, to get it in time for the code update, uh, to ensure that the, um, compliance project that's happening uh, continues to go forward. And so if there is support from the Planning Commission just to send the memo as drafted, that's great as far as, at least I'm concerned. If there, if we have more work to do, happy to hear about that. One thing that occurs to me and may be able to be in the kind of spirit of a cover email is perhaps an executive summary would be a good thing. But our council members are used to reading long stuff, you know, we all have deep agenda packets and get through them. So I don't, I think that's a nice to have, not a have to have. And I, I think as we iterated through it, Commissioner Lazar, uh, Director Kenyon and I were pretty convinced of, you know, that we were landing on the same page on a number of things. You know, what we would like to see going forward, we do think there's probably at some point gonna be in need for a cap. We think the work, there's work happening now that should happen before that actually gets quite serious. And so that's sort of the spirit in which we drafted that and have brought it here. And so, uh, this is where we decide whether it goes to council or not, uh, in, uh, one of the next couple upcoming meetings.
Thank you so much for your service on that work committee. Um, Commissioner Lazar, also being a, a member of that task force, would you like to make any comments?
I think the things that, uh, in the, the draft, uh, memo to the council that are worth, um, paying attention to is, Commissioner Kraft did a good job of compiling the data with regard to the rental market picture. And there's a pie chart that kinda profiles the available short-term rental supply versus the long-term rental supply. And that's a very striking comparison. I think it's some of the things we heard during our discussions where we were sort of speculating and wondering how this was affecting things. And that really kinda brings that into focus. And then, uh, I prepared a series of maps that are included in there using the data from the Host Compliance Service. And that's vintage July of last year. And it just essentially shows kind of the snapshot of where we were from the standpoint of permitting some of these versus what we know to exist or have existed in the past and are not yet permitted. So we're, we got a ways to go. There's more, certainly more unpermitted than permitted at this juncture. I think that's safe to say. And, uh, and it's a significant population of, of, uh, housing within the city limits. So those are the, my main takeaways. And then I think with the one other thing we talked about is just sort of a spectrum of sort of ones that are easier to get behind conceptually as far as, um, things that are, that are fairly low impact to our housing stock, like somebody who lives in their own house, leasing out a room in their house to short-term stay that otherwise might just be their yoga studio or something. You know, that's not losing housing at a very, you know, severe way versus taking an entire house offline. That's kinda the, the most troubling version. So thinking about that spectrum and what we can live with and where we can kinda move in the future, should we take this matter up as a policy discussion? I think that's something the council will need to, to wrestle with before we see it again. So I don't know if that, does that sound about right?
Okay, I had a chance to read that, that draft ordinance and, um, or recommendations. I really appreciate the, that Chairman Mayor, uh, and that, uh, Director Kenyon let us know how we can create a working group and what the mechanisms for that and that, um, you know, because I was, I was one of the people ringing the bell of concern or, or around this. And so I was really happy to, um, not be on that committee and let my passions, um, subside a little bit and let cooler minds prevail on this. And I was really pleased to, 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 you know, to, to read your, your good work. So thank you. Good work. I'd like to make sure this goes on next, next, um, agenda, just in case Commissioner Mayor may, may feel that the work is done. And I know you two agreed to be on a, on a working group or a task force, partly if it was sort of a limited engagement thing as opposed to something that you're gonna have to do for years. And, you know, so we may, or, you know, but I want Commissioner Mayor to be able to lead a discussion about whether your, your work is finished here or whether, you know, this will be, um, ongoing. Um, I do, the only, I have just a, a couple of comments on it. I, I mean, I think it's ready to go, but, but, you know, as we know, Humboldt County, um, Planning Commission and now Board Supervisors, you know, have a draft short-term rental ordinance. And it might be, it might be, um, good to include that, um, you know, just by, by way of reference. Um, you know, they, they put this out November twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, their rental, short-term rental ordinance. And they, you know, it included an inland ordinance and a coastal ordinance and kind of the admin procedures and then a good neighbor guide. And there, there may be some, that may be just worthwhile to put in there just so, so that our city council members, um, just have reference to that. And, um, you know, they actually had a moratorium in the county, a short, you know, a short-term rental moratorium. And that was lifted in July. And, and they're looking at rentals less than thirty days of not being, you know, principally permitted. And their, their cap or their, where they are right now is at one point six six percent of rentals are, of all available, of all housing is, is short-term rentals. And they're proposing a two percent cap. So that's, I mean, just, just so there might be some consistency, city council might wanna know, you know, what, what the county is deciding. And the county also decided for, for short-term rentals to be not transferable. You know, was one of their, one of their big decisions. So I don't know, maybe just making some reference to what, what the county's processes on, on this might be worthwhile in that document. And the only other thing was, you know, we received a really great comment letter from Raylena, um, Crichton. Um, and, uh, had a lot of research in it. It was something that was given to us. And I think maybe we should, um, attach that to, to this memo that's going to city council. I really appreciate when a community member puts that amount of effort into something and there's, um, a, a lot of good information in there. And I would like to see the city council get that as well. So those are my, my two comments.
You made me think of something. One thing that we found, that we, none of us mentioned tonight, that we found ourselves being, um, very much in agreement on is we don't think the current system where the approval runs with the land makes sense. So that would comport with what the county has decided. Uh, and I know Commissioner Lazar is intimately familiar with the, with the county stuff. I, I, I'm perfectly happy to have both, uh, Ms. Crichton's, um, uh, letter and those ordinances go along as, you know, here's community input, here's what, uh, another jurisdiction locally has chosen to do. We just made their packet very fat. They're big. They're big.
We can throw in Arcata's, uh, regs too.
And, and, you know, this will, I, I took several classes from, uh, a very famous management consultant named Peter Drucker. And he, we all, uh, wanted to be strategic, uh, planners. And he, in his Austrian voice, he said, "The problem of this strategy is it always devolves into work." This will become work for the staff and I'm sure the Arcata ordinance and other things will, will become part of the work that they do. So we'll, we'll get there one way or another.
Again, thank you for your work. Um, Commissioner Freitas, would you like to weigh in on this discussion?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think the letter is very clear and well crafted. I appreciate that it has kind of a summary of the conversation that we had had at the Planning Commission. Just so they can kinda have a sense of what we talked about. Um, I didn't see there being a reference to the date of that meeting. It might be a good idea to include, um, the date or dates that we discussed it. So if they wanna go back and watch the video of our discussion, they can. That's just a suggestion. But otherwise, I think it looks good. And I'm, I'm wondering though, like, if there's, if there's a need to say something along the lines of like, if council, you know, chooses to not move forward with making this a priority, like we request, um, you know, something to be kind of brought back down to us, you know, like some kind of guidance to the commission on how to, how to regulate, you know, problematic sites, um, if at all. Or if we should just sort of put forward our request and, and leave it at that. I'm fine either way. But I just wanted to see what the other commissioners thought about that.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that city council is, is not gonna take some kind of action or make some recommendations to staff in terms of how to move forward with this. But, but it would be nice to include in our letter that, um, that, that we'd like to be informed about, you know, the next steps. And, and if they want us to have any role, um, in, in those, or whether our work is truly done at this moment.
So let me ask a clarifying question, uh, of Commissioners Benson and Freitas. Would adding that mean we bring this back to the commission in a month with, uh, whatever we've done? Or are we, uh, directing, or would you see directing staff to go ahead and forward it to the council? With these thoughts and requests. And I'm assuming, although I'm not positive, that the Subcommittee makes some kind of presentation to council at the time that they take it up. So we can also say, if you're not gonna act on this, please at least tell you, give us some vision of where you think we ought to go. Because the current situation's pretty rough, you know? I've been a flibberdiggibbit. I've been a flibberdiggibit on my votes. Commissioner Benson had said hard no until we sort this out, and then D-Lo and Steve and have been sort of the adults in the room along with Meredith. And so it's, you know, it's, it's not solid from a, a policy standpoint, you know? We, we, we need better guidance than we have.
Well, I guess I would say for my, for my part, I'm fine with it not coming back to us in terms of changing things based on what we just discussed, but it sounds like Commissioner Benson's preference would be to wait until Commissioner Mayor has a chance to weigh in on it as well. I don't know if it's possible to like have staff reach out to her to see if she wants the opportunity or not, and if not, give it forward. But that's my two cents on it. I'm, I'm comfortable either way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also comfortable, I, actually I prefer to move it forward with, with more haste, and I'm, I don't expect to see a, a revised draft. I think if you just take in, into mind some of the comments that I made about just having some reference to the Humboldt County Planning Commission draft and, and Raylena Crichton's work attached, I'm happy with, with that. I don't need to see that again. And really, for Chair Mayor, it was really, it's more about the dissolution of the, whether or not to dissolve the task force, as opposed to her needing to see it or agree to it.
All right, that ma, that makes sense to me. Acting Com, Chair, we do have a couple people in the audience who look like they might be interested in this, so even though this is not, I, I, I don't know if this is actually something where we're required to open for public comment, but it does seem like we should, we ought to.
And I concur. So let's open it up to public comment now. Anyone in the House who'd like to speak on this? Come forward, please.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So this is just the letter that I wrote to everyone. I'm glad to see a reevaluation of the STR, STR ordinance being brought for discussion. As you probably know, this county, Humboldt County, is the fifth-most rent burden county in the entire country. It's over three thousand other counties. With fifty-three percent of our renters paying more than thirty percent of their income for rent utilities, this fifty-three percent of thirty percent does not factor in the exorbitant costs of food, fuel, and other necessities here in this community. While the draft letter states there are two hundred and forty listings, a closer look at available data actually shows four hundred and three listings in Eureka. Eighty-one percent of those are entire homes. To put that another way, in Eureka, three hundred and twenty-seven entire homes have been converted to hotels. This is without rezoning, without public process, without oversight or community input. When homes are converted to hotels, it pushes the cost of housing higher, affordability further from reach. This squeezes our neighbors, friends, and loved ones out of this community. It's important that we limit short-term rentals to true home shares at most. Otherwise, it's impossible to effectively regulate what is shown to be a highly lucrative business venture carried out on behalf of massive corporations. I was checking Airbnb today. They're worth, I think it's ninety-four point some billion dollars. And at the county meeting, I was fortunately homesick all day, so was able to zoom in from nine until three P.M. when they actually discussed it. And Airbnb sent a letter out to every single person that is a host in our region to let them know that this was going to be on the agenda and that they should show up and talk about it. As a private citizen who doesn't host Airbnbs, I was fortunate enough to be sick that day so that I could stay home to make comment. Most people don't have that privilege to be sick on that particular day. So I just wanna bring that before everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for the letter, Mr. Taylor, and I'll, I'll request of the, of the task force that they also include this in the bundle that goes to City Council. Anyone else in the House like to speak to this issue? How about online? Okay, Director Kenyon, is this, do we make a motion on this?
Yeah, you would move for them to take it to City Council with your proposed additions.
Okay, would one of the originators like to make the motion?
I will move that we move the draft vacation rental memo, the letters from Ms. Crichton and Mr. Taylor, and the county's draft ordinance to the City Council for review at a soon-to-come-up coming meeting.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion amongst Commissioners? Or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say again, thanks to you both of the Subcommittee for taking this on. You did a great job, and I can tell it was a fair amount of work for staff as well. So thanks, everyone.
Indeed, I echo that. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move this to a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstentions? None? The motion passes.
And I just wanted to say, there's two City Council meetings in March, the fifth and the nineteenth, and our Planning Commission meeting's on the thirteenth. So I will talk offline with Commissioner Craft about what works best, and we'll agendize it for Committee Commission reports.
Excellent, thank you.
And for those who are interested in the county draft short-term rental ordinance, it's being reviewed now. They're taking comments up through February twenty-seventh, and then there will be a Board of Supervisors hearing on March fifth. So those are the key dates for that particular ordinance, if you want to be involved in that. Okay, we are moving on in the agenda, as we, as we should on Valentine's Day. I'm so sorry to everyone having to work on Valentine's Day. I'm gonna be begging forgiveness at some point later tonight. All right. So let's move into new business. Is there, don't see any new business? Staff reports and communications?
I just wanted to say that we've received two general plan conformance review requests, one from, from the cap, county of Humboldt for acquisition of a property across from the courthouse, and one from Eureka City Schools for their acquisition of a small parcel and disposition of the Jacob site. So both of those general plan conformance reviews will likely come to you in March. And then also, I wanted to mention that I met with the Main Street Board today, and we actually talked about the zoning code update for Old Town and how to deal with ground floor uses. And one thing that's being mulled over is that we've, we see in the Half Moon Bays recently updated LCP is having two tiers where the, you're more strict on ground floor in the most central part and a little bit more lenient as you go out. So one thing that was brought up, that was a fantastic idea, is that we go for a walk in Old Town in March sometime, so we'll be planning that as a community event to talk, talk more broadly with people who live and work in Old Town about that. There was one other thing. Oh yeah, so we're also serving as a client for the Environmental Planning Capstone, and they're gonna be ground truthing who's occupying what in, in Old Town. And hopefully, you know, one of the things I learned today is it's true, it's really hard to occupy upper floors because of ADA accessibility, so, and we just don't know what's up there. Sounds like a lot of them are vacant, so that'll be hopefully one piece of information we'll get from all of this. That's it for me.
As a Cal Poly professor who does capstone, I really appreciate you taking on capstone projects and, and partnering and collaborating with the university. Other staff reports or communications? All right, other reports from Commissioners?
I've got two quick ones. One is I serve on the Eureka Chambers Government Affairs Committee, and we've had a series of presentations on the kind of mick-milieu of the Jacobs Avenue, Old Town, housing, parking, all of that stuff, both from the proponents of the Housing For All Initiative and by the city. And I just wanna compliment Director Kenyon and City Manager Slattery for a very informative and I found persuasive presentation to that body. Don't know what the Chamber's gonna do with it. I, if I was a betting person, and, and knowing that at the board level, at those committee levels, you know, there is not consensus, so I think they probably will not take a position either, either way. So not surprising. Director Kenyon did a great job. Surprising, I understood everything we talked about tonight, hundred percent. First meeting ever.
You're becoming an old hat at this.
I'm giving myself a cold star. I don't care what y'all think.
You're a planner now.
And did we report on the Jacobs, the, cause we both attended the, the meeting on the twenty, it was the town hall meeting on the twenty-third here in, in the Council Chambers. Yeah, and it was a really well-run meeting, I thought. It, it did a good job of kind of engaging both virtually and in person, and doing live polling, which I've never experienced before in that kind of a setting. And then just, I enjoyed the discussions. We had breakout groups, and there were, you know, a lot of good talk. And I think it just, yeah, the elephant in the room and remains in the room is, you know, what, who is the folks that are taking on this, you know, parcel? And, and what are, you know, what are their ambitions beyond what we see on a strange website? I know some of the discussions in the groups, I was, to me, what, what, what is, what is particularly important about changing the zoning of the property through the conventional process is that by doing that, like we saw in one of our items earlier today, we have the ability to apply conditions of approval, to subject it to environmental review, to have a public discussion about it. That's the conventional and appropriate way to handle zoning, not through the ballot box, I think, you know? That's an opinion. But I do think by doing it through the ballot box, we lose opportunity to apply exemptions to that type of discretionary action, which means that things that we could otherwise require in the context of a project are lost to basically a principally permitted use at that point, because that's essentially what's at stake. So, yeah, I think it's, it's a very weird dynamic, but I think it was a very good way to flush out the discussion, get the community engaged, and there's, and I am really thankful to the group, Kristin, you can say the name of them, I think, that has already been the South, the s-
South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance.
Yeah, really just an impressive assortment of people that have already taken a bull by the horns with respect to the school site and, and galvanized a lot of the, the local residents around, you know, what needs to happen and, and what their hopes and dreams are for that area, so.
And I just wanted to mention that, well, thank you Commissioner Freitas for putting me in contact with those people, but also Councilmember Molten asked for a debrief on that meeting to let the whole council know, you know, what the results of it were, what we heard. And so we're working on processing all the information we got, and we're tentatively scheduled to discuss it with City Council their second meeting in March.
Okay, I have one other communication that I wanna share with, with y'all. I went to City Council meeting to, 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 to speak in favor of hiring GHD to do the next phase of planning and permit and compliance on the Beta Zoo Trail, and one point four million dollars were awarded to them that, that night to do that work. However, it didn't include any presentation of their actual scope of work. And so I'm going back to, you know, you know, mixed feelings in, in this, in the Planning Commission about, about the completeness of the ISMND that we may have, you know, that there may be some exposure related to that, and we, we heard some promises from the city about, you know, because there wasn't an actual trail alignment yet, there was just this ape, and there, and there wasn't a tree survey, and there wasn't a full wetland delineation, and a number of things that, that, that we expected and that were sort of promised would be done next, so that, so, you know, so, so they got the money, they got, you know, early SECO compliance to get the grants to move this forward. But now it's, we have an op, or, you know, there's an opportunity to hold their feet to the fire in terms of doing the adequate job that we had, had, had hoped that, that they would do. And so I've asked Director Kenyon about, you know, whether it's worthwhile for us to look at that scope of work, or whether we have any purview at all to do that, and we may not. And if it's, if, if, if we've had our stamp on this and it's gone, that's, that's fine, you know? As a private individual, I'll get ahold of the scope of work and make comments on it. But, but Director Kenyon's gonna give us an answer on that when, when she knows if, if there's anything else that, that we-